Okay, we're live.
Uh, being at our three o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Bobbit.
Here.
Ronk.
Here.
Hess.
Here.
We do have a form. Max, could you leave us in for this morning or this afternoon?
This afternoon, yes. Our dear Lord and heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, dear Lord. We thank you for all the blessings that you put upon us and our employees. We ask to keep everyone out of harm's way and help them turn home to their families safely. We ask you, dear Lord, to be with us as we make the decisions that affect this county and our constituents. We ask that you help us to make the proper decisions. We ask you to forgive us our sins. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Cindy, would you lead us in the salute to the flag, please?
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I acknowledge that the agenda was properly posted in accordance to the Open Meeting Act.
Alright, thank you. Comments from the public on the below agenda items? None?
I make a motion to rever- review transfers of appropriations.
I'll second.
Hess moved, Ronk seconded to review the transfer of appropriations. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. We are two cents short in the assessor's office. So they're wanting to transfer one dollar to make it so it's not a negative balance.
And we have a transfer for the EAM. Uh, he's forty-five dollars short in his salaries, so we're moving forty-five dollars.
And Cindy, can you find out, when we do our budgets, we should know to the dollar what that is.
Penny and I had that discussion too. So yes, um, if we'll do this and then once we, I will investigate why it was off.
I know one time, maybe we, one time, I think last year, maybe we paid a benefit or something out of it one time.
Yeah, yes.
But we should know exactly to the dollar.
Well, and we, like Penny's, we, she has one and we had looked at hers as well. It was off like fifteen dollars and something. And so, um, yeah, I will do some, I'll look back at all the reporting and all that stuff and see.
This one's eight cents, so they're gonna tra- and that's in the rounding of how you divide something out. And that's understandable.
Yes.
And maybe.
Yeah, I wasn't concerned about those two, was the other ones.
This one, on the assessor, one is their reva- valuation, revow, and it was two cents and this is the other. And you know, we ought to consider maybe putting one dollar just for rounding issues on that, so.
Yeah.
Well, I move to approve transfers.
I'll second that motion.
Ronk moved, Hess seconded to approve the transfers as presented. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. Let's see, um, how is that going to work with the excise board not signing off on that?
We, we always have done that and because they're just acknowledging it. And so, we always go, once it goes through the regular board, then I provide copies to Alex and she inputs them. So they will be inputted before the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, and then we have six, uh, so we have here sixteen dollars from the treasures. And again, please research and let us know why that is.
Still moving.
And then here's another, we got, no, what's this one?
Um, she was short in her, the travel.
And I can tell you what that was. Because, you know, when the statutory travel is the forty-eight hundred dollars and then you gave us a thousand dollars for hotels. And I try to keep track of that. And of course, we're never gonna be a thousand dollars even, but I do try to keep track of that. It's just hotels. But I don't think that message got to the clerk's office. In fact, I'm not even sure you knew that you got a thousand dollars for hotels.
I didn't know.
For travel, for travel, any kind of travel, it's hotels.
So it's not just hotels? Cause I thought that's all it was, was hotels.
Well, I'll have to go back and research it.
I thought it was all travel.
That's what I thought too.
I thought it was just your, the thousand bucks and anything over a thousand bucks out of your cash account.
Right, but I thought it was just for hotels.
Well, I don't think, I don't know. We'd have to go back and look.
Okay, but anyway, there was other things taken out, um, and not just hotels. And so that's why it's short.
Okay, we need to make sure, are you transferring that back in from your cash account to this? Is that what you're doing?
Tre- no. It's, uh, from.
M and O.
M and O, yeah.
Well, the idea is so that the travel comes out of your cash accounts. It's, it's not.
Well, and normally it does, like last year it did. But I, for the first year, Dina had a thousand dollars travel and I didn't even know we got a thousand dollars for the hotel travel that first year. Part of us knew it, well, most of us didn't.
But the, the point is that really that ought to come out of your cash account.
Well, I agree with you, except that I didn't even know that it was supposed to come out the first year. So like, we're.
Well, that was ten, twelve years ago, right?
It wasn't. It was like.
How long have you been in office?
Four years ago.
You've been in office four years?
No. Cindy, when we started doing the statutory travel, it hasn't been that long.
Oh, okay, I got, I understand. I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought you meant, okay, I got you. Yeah, I don't remember how long it's been. But I just, um, yeah, I, I just, I mean, everybody could just pretend to spend a thousand dollars and take, ask for more in their M and O and then transfer it over. But we need to be more cognizant of that.
Yeah, I agree.
To make sure that, you know, I don't know if you want to reimburse that back out of your cash account to the county general for that?
Well, with the chart of accounts, we're gonna have to put it in a different account anyway. Statutory travel, and I just looked this up. We have a different number on that now, Cindy.
Okay, let me make a note of that.
It's a thirteen twenty now on statutory.
So are you gonna reimburse the county general out of your cash for that?
If she's got enough to move it, we will.
Okay, alright. So, uh, she wants to move two hundred and four dollars out of her cash account over to, to, I guess you want to change this one to take now to M and O?
Can we do it from a fi- but it's from a different fund, but we can still do it that way from transfer?
I'm not sure how you do that.
Man, that's a legitimate transfer. You're gonna have to get that approved.
Do.
I'm not sure we can. Within fund, internal transfers are not a problem.
But it's a different fund, so I don't think we can do just a transfer. She'd have to do a cash voucher, wouldn't you, from your.
Oh, and deposit it?
And deposit it into the general fund.
We'd tell her we did something else.
Yeah, yeah, so take it, yeah, deposit it, yeah, make a ca- yeah, that's right.
I want to make sure that the officers think that's a voucher.
We'll, we'll check on what's the appropriate way to handle that.
Just let me know that it'll be paid back.
Okay.
Alright. Um, okay. Purchase order, yeah, we've done, yeah. Okay, revert, review of purchase orders and travel claims. Um, oh, is it got something else?
No, I don't.
I make a motion to review.
I'll second it.
Hess moved, Ronk seconded to review the payment of purchase orders and travel claims. All in favor?
Um, Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Oh, I, motion carried.
Oh, I think I have one in here. Here's the last.
Oh, my purchaser?
Well, I get, these are, these have to do with, I don't know if we need to skip down to the affidavit thing or fit, because, or like this is to encumber that fifteen thousand.
Well.
I mean.
Well.
Oh, this is the deal that Stephen, yeah.
We can just hit that one when it gets to the end.
When Stephen comes in, right, he's coming in to talk about that.
Well, we can call him or, yeah, I mean, I visited with him about that.
Alrighty, we'll come down to that.
He does not have those ready, but he instructed me on what to do.
Alrighty.
And I think I asked this last month, and I'm gonna ask it again. Is Missy out of annual payments?
No, she's not.
She's good.
Okay. Are you talking vacation, like, or something?
Yeah, um, I don't know. She's got, no, well, I mean, that someone can transfer, but it ought to be for sick leave.
Yeah.
Yeah. What is an emergency charge for two dollars and three cents on one cat? I've never seen that. Have you ever seen anything like that?
Oh, what, is it, is it an air conditioner part or what?
I don't know, an emergency charge?
I'm thinking an emergency charge of.
Oh, like a charge, like, yeah.
Of one thirty-four A.
Two dollars and three cents, that's free shit.
Sign me up, yeah.
No kidding. Yeah, I hadn't thought, yeah.
We put a quarter pound in there.
Exactly. Two ounces, maybe.
Yeah, there you go. Maybe that was a can of dye.
Maybe it was.
We sure know where your air conditioner probably wrong.
Right now.
Yes, you do. What you need?
Um, I'm, I'm at the end of the field.
You're gonna stand still.
Just about, just about.
Nope, I'm not done with it yet.
Okay, alright, okay. Do we have any bonuses?
No, I don't.
I'm not aware of any.
Big air conditioner issue.
Here you go.
One of the track hose, he was hitting a bunch of water spraying at him and the, out of the air conditioner vent.
Yeah.
So he went under there and he looked and he found the hose and everything, he was shunned up. There was a dirt cloud in there.
Oh, no.
And he said, I went to go pop it out and he just.
Oh, man, man. We were working on the track over there at the shop one day and it was underneath the, underneath the track. And the other guy was outside and we had one of those buckets that had the pump.
Oh, yeah.
And George Barrick said, okay, pump it as hard as you can. And he was holding that thing out underneath the track. And squirted oil all over the shop floor and found two people that were standing there. I was one of them. Said, we're gonna drag you out of there.
Yeah, that's her place.
Thank you. Hey Penny, you must have signed this one.
Maybe. Oh, I bet they want to print a new one like that.
Ah, yeah, thank you. I didn't see that negative zip number there.
Let me buzz.
Mine is fifteen something.
Oh, all those minus ones.
Yeah, so the assessor and the.
Oh, are they gonna?
Hello. Hi, can you print out a new payroll affidavit? Will it allow you to print out a new payroll affidavit showing those ones that have the negative?
Two cents negative.
It shouldn't be negative now. Or can you just print out a whole new list and we just pull those out, or a whole new thing and pull them out?
Okay, so you're not gonna sign Scott Fulchamberg?
Oh, you'll have to do the transfers first, yeah.
You haven't.
No, I was, no, I haven't seen anything. I was just giving you something to do, Max.
Yeah, if you'll come get them, that's great. Okay, thank you, bye-bye. But she's gonna, she's gotta come do the transfers and then she'll reprint them.
Tell her we got the transfers.
Yeah, she's gonna come get them. The one on the bottom you don't have to do right now, but if you want to, that's fine. I just thought I'll keep them all together. Okay.
Okay, this isn't the one that Stephen has to give us the approval on, is it?
No.
This is the usual, normal, this is the okay one.
Yeah, but is that the AIP?
Yes, that's, that's the okay one.
They're gonna print, they're gonna print another one for the minus on Brandon's.
Yes, she'll go in, start the transfer.
Sign that then.
Not yet.
Okay.
So did the fire department need to sign off on that deal?
George didn't sign that.
Yeah, I didn't see George sign that.
Um. So Jody Evans?
Jody is, is not on the fire department.
Right.
Well, I thought he was the.
But he's the construction.
Construction manager, so does this, does the.
Cause he's guarded on there.
Does the fire department need to sign off that that work is done or whatever, that to the point?
I thought that was the deal, that, that he represents the fire department.
But he was gonna take it to the fire department and have them sign it before he brought it to us, is the way I thought it was.
That's the contract.
Now, the second one is.
That's just the contract.
Because that's to him. This one is to, uh, another vendor. So he's signing off, but he's signing off on himself to get paid.
On this one, I think we ought to wait on this one.
He, the fire, he, he's the guy that signs off on everything, but for him to get paid, the fire department on top, let mine off on him.
So Max, do you want to, do you want me to see if I can get someone in or?
Do you want to sign off on?
Well.
No, that's Waikiki, that's not Anheuser. Excuse me, that's not the right department, yeah.
Um.
Or, I mean, I can try to get a, we'll, we'll get ahold of someone and run it through on Monday.
Pay it on Monday, can't we?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll just.
Let's just do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, even if, if you can fax it to him and fax something back, scan it to him and say, is this okay? And they send you an email that says, yeah, go with it.
Yeah.
Something like that, just to.
Some acknowledgement from them, okay.
I don't want to pay them. They say, well, he hasn't been doing his job.
Right, right.
Not that that would happen.
Right, he's, yeah. And he came in and visited with me last week and I'm gonna try to kind of help him with the bid stuff and I told him we'd work together on it, so.
Okay, we are done with the payment of purchase orders and travel claims.
Oh, I, I move to approve.
I'll second.
Ronk moved, Hess seconded to pay, make payment of purchase orders and travel claims as presented. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Oh, I, motion carried unanimously. Okay, let's look through the page.
Do you sort of wear any blankets?
No blankets. Oh, so that's the affidavit.
I want to see here, take these.
Okay.
Here, Cindy, you can have this and start signing. I was just looking for my sheet.
Yeah, but some of them are gonna have to re-sign. I guess we just.
I thought they took the, did we not take those out?
Did you take out the ones?
No, I didn't take any of them out.
I, I, I think she's gonna reprint them all, so I, other than, I guess the ones that are already.
I don't know if she's.
We can just move to approve payroll.
Well, let's wait till we get those and.
Penny Dow signed this on six thirty of eighteen.
Wow, she's good.
She's fast.
She's back to the future.
I knew it was gonna happen.
Eighty-eight miles an hour is what she did.
See, Donnie Head was, brought that report to conference over there. He got stopped on the interstate doing ninety-eight miles.
Oh, my word.
Yeah. He had Grant County District One half. He says, you work for Grant County? He said, no, I work for fifteen counties. He said, you have a good day, sir. This is your one time.
Oh, my God.
It was his lucky day, for sure.
Huh?
Was it seven?
No, it wasn't seven.
Did you say it was on the interstate?
It's on the interstate, yeah.
Where was that?
He was down, down south because Kevin with the railroad yard called him and told him that there was a highway patrolman at this overpass. Donnie said, I was talking on the phone, cruising, and he said, I went right over there. He said, immediately when the lights come on, I remembered. He told me he was sitting there. I said, you gotta be kidding. You had a warning before. He said, yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it was.
I would never have had that luck.
And he got off. That's the fastest I've ever heard.
I mean, cause that's a reckless driving type deal.
Well, over a hundred, it's automatic. You go to jail. Really? Yeah.
Who is this, Donnie Niestad? I don't have any idea who you're talking about.
Donnie, Donnie Head.
Niestad.
Yeah, Niestad, yeah, yeah.
Let's see, Cindy, can you sign for the excise board?
Does, oh.
Yes.
There you go.
I think it's their secretary.
Okay, yeah, I am.
Thank you so much. Those are back and they're done.
Okay, we got purple, pink, and I don't know what kind of blue this is.
That's kind of a sky blue.
Greenish, sky blue.
Here's the replacement ones.
So you're saying if you've got a Grant County hat on.
Well, I'm just saying that that's what he told me he had on.
It might be your lucky day.
Course, the next guy might get, say, well, I give one guy a warning, you're not.
Let me say, you're the third Max S I've stopped.
That gummit.
Oh, oh, okay.
I think those are the new ones she brought in.
Will it show on your page sheet what it costs? You're, you're insurance Mike, aren't you?
Mm-hmm. Oh, let's see, yeah.
Oh, I, I know how much it was, cause I saw hers.
It's, uh, five ninety-nine forty-four.
So right, six hundred bucks.
Yeah, but now that's gonna go up a little bit in genuine, July one.
Okay.
Yeah, that's going up to.
And then, and then if you have like a child, it's more.
Yeah, that's just mine.
Well, I was just, yeah.
But just for a spouse, yeah.
Yeah, that was, I, I think it's gonna be like six twenty, six twenty-five for just the, a spouse.
How Falfit County's paying for their whole family.
Oh, I think they changed them.
Well, they're, and now they're trying to get some of it back.
Yeah, they're gonna take their, they're gonna quit that.
Now, that's kind of unusual these days.
Well, I guess it was cause of all the, when that little stuff was going on, it couldn't be helped.
Oh, because, yeah, they could go out and, they had to give them an incentive to come work there.
Hmm, this is final.
Like you're paying four fifty-three oh eight for your children.
You what?
You're paying four fifty-three oh eight for your two children on the Sunday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So why, why are my two kids cheaper than your one husband?
Because it's cheap for, because we, we don't spend near the money on children.
Kids, cause they're healthier.
They're healthier, yeah.
I would've thought.
They haven't had time to clog their arteries yet.
Yeah, they're not, you know, they're not taking all those ten thousand different medications. And the, it's two or more. I mean, you can have ten children and it's still gonna be four hundred and fifty-three, whatever.
There, there's a, there's a story that I'll share later.
Okay, that's an incentive, Kathy, that doesn't have those other children. It won't cause you to even warn your mother.
So Pat, I think you should have another. You've already sent one off to college, so the nest is gonna be empty before long, so you need to fill that nest back up.
Well, you see it, it says legitimate children and illegitimate children.
No.
It doesn't.
Do you know, we've had over.
Boys, we're going down, Penny.
Our conception rate is forty percent. Two out of five.
Two out of five.
Lost three of them.
Yeah, that's Joan lost, I think, two or three, but that's why there's a big gap between Tyler and Trevor, cause she had.
She lost two children.
Lost three. I mean, they were all fairly early.
Yeah, but you still, it's, yeah, you still lost a child.
We lost two children before.
My mom lost one after I was born. She was pregnant again after I was born. I said, you know, I said to her later in life, I think that was God's way of telling it, Eleanor, you don't need to have any more kids. Seven is enough.
The, the last one, that was, I mean, that was hard on her body.
Yeah, it was, yeah, yeah. Well, any, I mean, that's, it's hard on you physically and emotionally and, but I just, fortunately, I never had to go through that. But I did not know that.
I always said we wanted, I needed a baker's dozen and she didn't think that was, she didn't think it was very cool.
She didn't like that. She didn't think that was funny, huh?
And she's one of five.
Let's see. Penny needs to, this one's not negative. This is her cash account.
Now Cindy, will we be able to pick those checks up, like when we, when we leave our meeting that day?
Is that what day is the meeting?
It's on Monday.
Ninth is Monday.
Should probably print them on, it goes Friday.
We'll have them ready by, by that morning.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they'll be ready by that morning.
I'm just trying to save myself a trip.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Good thing you're here. We can get all our signing taken care of. And, and just FYI, while you all are on the payroll, I did discuss that with Buddy and he was comfortable, and Penny and I discussed it as well, that we'll get the payroll produced, and then her office will reger- register it prior to the end of the, close of the business for this fiscal year, because that's what the issue was last year, was that we had gotten them ready, but then they weren't registered in the same fiscal year, so there was a lot of correcting that had to be done, so we're gonna be on the same page this year and try to keep that from happening. Well, it's not going to happen this year. We're gonna get them registered before we close out the end of the year, so, anyway, just wanted to pass that along.
Need to go back through my email and print that off.
Yeah, you could just take this in there and have Desi make you one.
Oh, that's all right, I'll print it off. That, and that reminds me, I need to call Vaughn, what's his last name, find out when our truck's gonna get here.
That's what I was wondering.
What is his last name?
Spears.
Spears.
Spears, yeah. Didn't he say July?
Yeah.
Next week is July, we're a chip seal on the fourth.
Did, did I sign off on the Brandon's, or not, or not Brandon's?
I signed off on Brandon's.
Did I, did I sign this?
No, I didn't. When I looked at it, you had, it's the bottom one.
Bottom one, okay.
Yeah, you got three.
Oh, here's Brandon's right here.
Three sheets. Oh, I need to sign Brandon.
Yeah, and here's these as well.
For Cindy. Oops, sorry.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, yeah, just get with me and I'll get that.
Jeff, let me call you back.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good. Okay, that'd be good. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do what I can do and not have the issues and just get it to where we don't have to endure our household home, not have to worry about it.
Did you guys get a look at all these?
Yeah, certainly did, thanks.
Do we have most of these things looked at now?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Uh, I make a motion to approve the June payroll.
Second.
Hess moves, Ronk seconded to approve the June payroll. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. Contract with Tisdale and O'Hara for assessor's office.
Hello, POs are done and payroll will be done here shortly. Well, maybe give us a couple minutes on the payroll, so. I may have jumped the gun just a hair. I'm sorry, what? If you want to, you can, or if you wanna wait a few minutes and pick them both up at the same time, however you wanna deal with it. All right, so just give us a couple minutes and you come in. Thank you, bye-bye.
So, we've got four originals, all right? Four originals, so are these all the same?
They're all the same.
Okay, are they the same as last year's?
Yes. My understanding was that.
Sorry, I'm slow, Max.
That's okay. We're doing just fine. Payroll rapid.
Okay, so do you need a motion on that?
We do.
I move to approve the contract with Tisdale and O'Hara for the assessor's office this fiscal year, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
I will second that motion.
So, Ronk moved, has seconded to approve the contract with Tisdale and O'Hara for the assessor's office for FY eighteen nineteen, uh, same as last year. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. And we got the statutes.
Yes, and I verified that as well.
Thank you.
I did, I remembered that too, so I double-checked it. So I had it as seventy-five on just that one, but I, it's seventy-four. The only other change was just that instead of at the top, it, it used to say, being signed this first day of July, and we, I changed it to a fact.
Fifty, right, 'cause we're not signing this first day, that's very good, yeah. Good catch.
So I tried to fix it on all of these.
Uh, wait a minute, I don't need to sign this if it's a negative.
No, 'cause you're gonna sign those other ones.
Yeah.
Sure you already did. You can just cross-
Mine they got too.
Just cross the whole, put a scratch across the whole page if you want.
Yeah, 'cause we've got the reprints of the other ones. Oops, didn't miss a thing?
We did, I missed one. It was like, and I had it, but I just didn't have it on the agenda.
Okay.
Last week. Or I guess this week, actually. Seems like a week ago.
It does, indeed.
It was just a couple of days ago.
That's how I get behind.
It's Monday all over.
Yeah, it, I mean, it kinda, it feels like it, 'cause it's just out of the norm. But you know, it, it is so true, the older you get, the, the time just-
No.
Flies.
Okay, she can come get her now.
All right.
We are down to item F, Resolution Thirty, interlocal agreement with Alfalfa County, thirty-one with Garfield County, thirty-two with K County, and fifty-three with Noble County. We have a motion to-
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Hess move, Ronk seconds, to approve the interlocal agreements with Alfalfa County, Garfield County, K County, and Noble County as documented on the agenda. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Interlocal agreement and mutual aid with the town of Deer Creek for FY eighteen nineteen.
And I have two copies of those, yeah.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ronk moved, Hess seconded to approve the interlocal agreement, twenty eighteen thirty-three, and, uh, twenty eighteen thirty-four mutual aid with the town of Deer Creek. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously.
And I do have the, uh, contract approved by the DA when we get to that line item.
Robin needs to sign all of them.
Yeah, I'll make sure she does.
Oh, thank you. Did it get some to sign?
No.
Two on each one.
Okay.
That way they can have an original, we can.
We are on number H, Resolution Twenty Eighteen Forty, designation and appointment of Buddy Carroll, um, uh, doing business as county budgeting services LLC, Charles W. Carroll. Now, on the contract, his contract is different. His contract is a thousand dollars higher than it was last year, plus it, he wants to be paid in twelve equal monthly installments beginning July first, instead of, you know, once after the budget is finished. He would prepare the financial statements and the estimate of needs, meet with the county officers, uh, to initiate availability appropriations, meet with county commissioners and excise board to review, prepare the final estimate of needs, prepare copies for the clerk, for the commissioners, and prepare the publication sheet, and if requested, prepare reevaluation charges, settlement for distribution to add long tax units, and six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
How much?
Six thousand two hundred and fifty. We've been paying five thousand two hundred and fifty, and he is retiring from his present firm June thirtieth, so he has new address and new email and new phone numbers, so we-
And I have that down as the contract as a line item down is T.
T, okay.
So that-
Well, we kinda need to discuss it.
Yeah, I know, and I, I don't know why I have them, yeah, so I apologize, I should've had it up there.
Well, they're kinda, if we're gonna, we need to kinda know what the contract says before we do the resolution. So maybe we need to item to, to move from item G to item T for review first. Do we have a motion to do that?
So-
G to T.
Guess, yeah, I guess I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Ronk motion has seconded to move from item G to item T to review the contract, so we just, there's the contract.
I mean, other than-
Steven did, Steven did sign off on it.
Other than what you just said, is there anything different about what he'd do?
No, that's just more, the, the only difference is, is higher, and he wants it in twelve equal payments, but other than that, everything's the same as what he's always got, as far as I can tell.
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't wanna do it, so.
I wouldn't wanna do it, yeah.
So do we, I-
I make a motion to approve the, uh, budgeting, uh, contract, which was the services with Buddy Carroll.
Second.
Hess moves, Ronk seconded to approve the contract for budgeting services between county budgeting services LLC and Grant County for FY twenty nineteen. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously.
Now, that will be on T, or that'll be on A?
That is on T. We're doing the contract.
Okay, contract.
And, uh, just a minute, I'm gonna-
Got you. I make a motion to move from item T back up to item H.
Okay.
And designating the point, uh, Buddy Carroll as our budget maker.
Second.
Hess mo- motion, Ronk seconded to move from item T to item H and to approve Resolution Twenty Eighteen Forty, designation and appointment of budget maker as new Buddy Carroll. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Item I, um, detail list of lease purchase agreements after payments made in June, so these are going to be in, so, very good.
Okay, very good.
So, we've got it. We'll have to sign one document instead of signing fifty.
Seventy.
Yeah, or whatever it is.
I did as an exhibit.
Exhibit, very good. So she's got a breakdown as to, uh, uh, District One, District Two, and District Three to renew the finance lease purchase, and the ADA has signed off on it. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Ronk moves, has seconds to approve Resolution Twenty Eighteen Fifty-Four, detailed lease purchase agreements for highway D one, D two, and D three as presented. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. You know, we have to have that for all of the copiers and everything.
Okay, so I, yeah, I need to-
Anything, anything that's on lease purchase, so all the copiers.
Okay.
It's gonna include, Steven's got some in his office, uh-
We do it already.
Yeah, 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 no, no.
Well, it wouldn't take care of the copiers.
No, 'cause, uh, 'cause that probably isn't, I don't know that your copy's on there, Matt.
No, I guess not.
So it's gonna be all of those kinds of things.
Okay, we'll get working on those.
It'd be the sheriff's departments on his vehicles, um, anything he's got on lease purchase.
Okay.
So we have to have those, and I, I would suggest, in the same way I do it, by departments, show each department.
Okay.
And the, uh, health department will have some, um-
Sheriff, health department. Now, do we have to do O issue extension or any of those?
No, I don't think we do. No, I don't think we do Oissue extension, because we don't pay for those.
Right, okay.
Or do we pay them? Yeah, we do too. Do we pay them? If we, if they come out of our.
If it's something that comes out of county funds.
If it comes out of our, their budget to the count, yes. So it might be easy for Alex to look at lease purchase. I don't know if she's got some deal she can type in that tells her that, to search them.
Well, yeah, well.
Because I know we've missed some from the assessor's office before, and some from the sheriff's department.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we'll work on that.
All right. Um, Resolution 2018-57, designation of legal publication, the Medford paper star for FY 1819. Do we have a motion to approve that?
I shall move. Second.
Hess moved, Ronk seconded, to approve Resolution 2018-57, designation of legal publication being the Medford paper star. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. We are down to Resolution 2018-58, treasurer's authorization to direct deposit for FY 2017, 2018, in accordance with OS, Oklahoma Statute 62, 1991. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Ronk moved, Hess seconded, to approve 2018-58, treasurer's allocation to direct deposit for FY 19. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. 2018-55, designation of county depository bank, general fund, Grant County Bank for FY 19. Do we have a motion to approve that?
I shall move. Second.
Hess moved, Ronk seconded, to approve 2018-55, designation of county depository bank, general fund, Grant County Bank for FY 19. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Resolution 2018-63, designation of county depository banks, Bank 7, C and B of Blackwell Farmers Exchange, Bank of Wakita, First National Bank of Nash, First State Bank of Pond Creek, Grant County Bank of Medford, and State Exchange Bank of Lamont. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ronk moved, Hess seconded, to approve Resolution 2018-63, the designation of county depository banks, Bank 7, Central National Bank of Blackwell Farmers Exchange, Bank of Wakita, First National Bank of Nash, First State Bank of Pond Creek, Grant County Bank of Medford, and State Exchange Bank of Lamont. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Um, Resolution 2018-59, investment of all interest for FY 19, is authorized and directed to work with the Board of County Commissioners to invest and reinvest the funds available. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, um, Hess moved, Ronk seconded, to approve Resolution 2018-59, investment of all interest by the treasurer to work with the Board of County Commissioners to invest and reinvest funds as available. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously.
I missed one, but I see he did too.
Very good.
So, I mean, if that'll work.
That will work.
Okay.
That will work. Um, Resolution 2018-60, interlocal cooperative agreement with our CED 8, um, do we have a motion to approve?
I shall move. Second.
Hess moved, Ronk seconded, to approve Resolution 2018-60, interlocal agreement with the CED 8 for FY 19. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously.
This MOU is with Woods County, it says EMS, is it supposed to be, uh, 911?
No, that's a different one. I have another.
That's a different one, okay.
Yeah, well, I've got another one.
It's MOU S E.
No, I have that one as, I have that one as well.
Okay.
The 911 SWIFT one.
Okay, well.
It's down on the agenda.
SWIFT 911, but our call center, are we saying that EMS?
Well, however.
Yeah, this is the, wait a minute, this is, the purpose of the MOU, so, this is the SWIFT 911, the MOU is the memorandum of understanding is what that stands for. It's not a Mickey Mouse.
Well, he's saying EMS though, as in emergency services.
Should it not be EMS? Should it be OEM? On the agenda, do I have that incorrect?
Let me see what you got. No, it is with the emergency services from them. We are, we are contracting with the Grant County Emergency Management and the Woods and the Grant County for the purpose to use SWIFT 911. They, the whole contract is under Woods County.
Okay, 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 okay.
And then it's prorated by population, and we pay our share.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Got you.
So.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't the 911.
Yes, exactly, right, no, it is not.
And you don't have to call them for your.
No, no, right. So, it's exactly like what we had last year.
Yeah.
And Stephen has, and they've, and Woods County has already signed off on it.
Look at them doing it on the.
So.
Of course, they're wanting their money.
It's your turn.
Oh, I, I move to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Ronk moved, Hess seconded, to, uh, sign Resolution 2018-61, the memorandum of understanding between Woods County EMS and Grant County EMS for fiscal year 19 for the SWIFT 911. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Oops.
And like we talked at the LAPC meeting last night, that's a good thing, because we're only having to pay a portion of that, so it would cost us $4,000 if we was on our own, and it's only costing us like 500 for.
Well, no, it's like 2200 or something.
2200?
Yeah, it's, oh, but it's about half the cost.
Yeah, let's see, six, it's about thirty, it's, it's twelve, five total.
Here, here, I'll check, I'll check.
Yeah, but one oak is picking up.
Well, we're hoping they didn't last year. We never got it.
It's 2,165 is our portion.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, yeah, the total is 6495.
Yeah, 6495 is the total.
And Brandon's supposed to be working to see if they will pick this one up.
Yeah, he said they had a new plant manager, and he wasn't aware of that.
Oh, so hopefully we'll get it back on.
Yeah, they're just about shipping everybody off to Tulsa.
I know.
There's three of them there.
And those are two of the same thing.
Okay, this is, no, this is.
This is that letter that I presented last week, if it's in.
Oh, this is the same thing, this is that letter of, yeah.
Of engage, of agency, letter of agency.
Let them look at our information so they can fit.
On the hazard mitigation.
Remember?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Hess moves, Ronk seconds, to approve Resolution 2018-62, with NODA and the Oklahoma Emergency Manager for the mitigation plan. It's a letter of agency to allow them to look at our information. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess. He said, he said, I heard, I heard dual.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. He wanted to be Pat Ronk today.
Yeah.
Will the real Pat Ronk please stand up?
I remember that show.
Yeah, there we go.
How old are we? Oh, yeah, that was showing on our. Okay, reimburse for all that support.
I better go back and date you.
Okay. And we're okay to ask for the reimbursement, because we don't know what it is till next month for June, right? You know, for the, uh, the election board.
Oh, yeah, I'll make sure and get my temple changed. Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because we'll need that.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah.
All right, so Resolution 2018-64 is the reimbursement for election board staff for FY 1819. It's just saying that the, that the payroll for the Grant County Election Board staff will be reimbursed, we turn it into the state, they include their postage and all their expenses and their salaries, so.
Move to approve.
Second.
So, Ronk moves, Hess seconds, to approve 2018 Resolution dash 64 for reimbursement for the election board staff for 2018-19. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously.
And that, if I may mention, that's the people who do the polling.
Right.
And then here's the full-time service one.
Okay, all right, all right. 2018-65 is reimbursed for the election board personnel staff with the full-time services what we turn into for reimbursement, and we're only allowed up to a certain dollar on that. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Hess moves, Ronk seconds, to approve Resolution 2018-65, reimbursement to the election board personnel services, full-time salary. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Done T, so to you, annual subscription. Okay, so now they're wanting the money.
Yeah.
Show me the money.
Mm-hmm.
Now, this would be paid in next fiscal year.
Okay.
So we will not, you didn't encumber.
Okay, no, we didn't encumber.
So, yeah, for next year.
Okay.
So this is just the, the annual subscription. We had the contract that said we're going to do it, now here's the invoice that say they're invoicing us for that. So do we have a motion to approve it in our, now, let's see, they're showing that they were billed 6,495, and they're turning around now and invoicing us for 2,165.
I move to approve the annual subscription.
Okay, I'll second that.
Ronk moves, Hess seconds, to approve the annual subscription with, for SWIFT 911, mass modification with Woods County in the amount of 2,165 for fiscal year 2019, to be paid in 2019. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Okay.
Did we need a buzz, Stephen?
Yes, that would be great. Let's see, yeah, we should have, oh, we got three of them there.
Yeah.
There was just one talking.
Okay, we're in the board meeting, we didn't know if he would either want to come down or buzz back to discuss, just to confirm that he is going to work on the affidavits. Okay, thank you.
This is Stephen Young.
Stephen, this is Cindy Bobbit. We're in our board of commissioners meeting, and we're down to V, W, and X for their affidavit for District 1 Yellow House, affidavit for the Grant County Expo Center regarding the Pioneer Security System, and the affidavit for crossing construction change order number two.
Okay.
And, um, we're understanding you're working on those.
I am working on those, yes.
Okay.
And it, uh, you know, it may have been done by Friday, um, I'm kind of backed up, I've been out of the office with my back, um, so, um, but yeah, I'll, I'll get it to you. What's your next board meeting?
It'd be Mon, we have one Monday, and we also have one Thursday.
So.
Do we still?
Monday's, uh, second.
Oh, wait, yeah, wait a minute, we don't need to do the one on Thursday. Excuse me, we only have the one on Monday.
So I'll do a cancellation.
We only, we will meet Monday and then the following Monday.
Okay.
So.
Um, yeah, I'll have them ready by then.
Okay, Monday, all right, that would be.
And then do you want to just confirm with him that he did, that you did advise me to go ahead and encumber those funds for fiscal year?
Yes, I mean, you know, the, the funds are from purchases from this fiscal year, and that's, we need to pay out of those funds when, when we get those affidavits ready to present to the board for approval.
Yes, okay.
So, uh, do we need to make a motion to encumber those funds and, and wait on your affidavit?
Well, yeah, I mean, just, just a motion to encumber the funds and wait on the affidavit, because the, the affidavit, you're going to have to have the fair board sign off on the affidavit, as well as the other company sign off on the affidavit, before you cut those funds loose to them.
Got you, all right.
So, um, you know, Yellow House is going to have, has to sign off on theirs, uh, uh.
Pioneer Security.
Pioneer Security Alarm's going to have to sign off on theirs. I can't remember.
Crossland, Crossland Construction.
Crossland Construction's going to have to sign off.
All right.
All the parties are going to have to sign off, then once all the parties are signed off and they present that affidavit to us, then we can pay on those. And so, um, it may take a while to get the fair board and everybody to sign off on them.
Okay, they have a special board meeting, uh, tonight, no, so, it'll work, okay.
Okay.
That'll work.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Stephen.
All right, you're welcome.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got the amounts right here, so if you want me, I can tell you the amounts.
So, okay, let's go to item V. We need a motion to encumber the Yellow House invoice, waiting on the affidavit from Stephen Young.
I make a motion to encumber the Yellow House.
In the amount of 15,148.51.
Yes.
Second.
481, and how much?
51.
51. Maybe, oh, eighty, 48, 48. I'm, I'm kind of slow.
15, 48.
Okay, got it.
You want me to go ahead and just tell you that?
Yeah, yeah.
99421 on the next one.
Okay, 99421, and 4271191.
That was an afterthought, I wrote those on there.
So, Hess moves, Ronk seconds, to encumber, um, 15,148.51 to Yellow House Machinery, while ADA prepares an affidavit for D1. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Um, we need a motion to encumber 944.21 for the Pioneer Security System.
So moved.
Second.
Ronk moves, Hess seconds, to encumber 944.21 for the Pioneer Security System, waiting on the affidavit prepared by ADA Stephen Young. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried. The third one is 42,711.91 for Crossland Construction. Do I have a motion to encumber that?
I make a motion to encumber that.
Second.
Hess moves, Ronk seconds, to encumber 42,711.91 to Crossland Construction for change order O2. Did I say the amount? I think I did.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Yes.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously.
Just about that amount.
Under the advice of.
Of ADA Young, yes, right, right. Okay. We are down to item, there are no road crossings. We are down to item seven. Um, Mr. Maxwell, you have four.
You know what, I, it's been a long meeting, I don't have any comments.
Pat.
Ditto.
Cindy, ditto. Uh, so nine, nine, and nine, brings it down to item eight.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Hess moves, Ronk secondes, at four, secondes.
Seconds.
Seconds at 4:07 to adjourn. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
We are adjourn, hey, wait, we forgot to sign this paper. But it's.
Hey, do we need to bring these back on Monday? Or can we just?
No, we don't need to bring them back.